Made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on South Coast website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So we have on our agenda, which was we recently revised, the master plan committee update. It's a discussion item. Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The master plan committee is meeting this Wednesday, the 10th, at which time we'll go over the final categories of goals and recommendations. And prior to our next planning board meeting, with the technical help of Sarah, I will share those with the board and for your review if there's anything that the board thinks that we missed that should be added. And then on Wednesday, we'll start discussing the chapters that people are updating. I'm doing land use and zoning. Excuse me. And I just started with the 2008 master plan and then just editing from there. And I looked through all the goals and recommendations and all the other areas for any recommendations for zoning changes, and they were a few, not a whole lot. Electric vehicle charging stations, clear mitigation for development on town roads. Identify any additional scenic roads, taller buildings on Route 9. Allow for more diversity of housing. Update in the storm water bylaw. Look into a tree canopy protection bylaw and then the downtown village district. So if there's anything else the board would like to add to that, any other suggestions? I'm open.
Mimi, there is some pending finalizing of a portion of the House bill that the governor, I think, signed. And Sarah and I are in the process of doing a little research on it. It has to do with MBTA communities.
Right.
Though the new and right now they've charged the DHCD with coming up with a like a guideline on how towns have to implement this new zone around a transportation station like the MBTA that has to allow for multiple units by right, multi unit housing by right. So we're going to do a little research on that. I've been getting information through mass planners forums and just through 490, 495 Metro West Partnership on what some of this means. And everyone's just starting to get their feet wet in it. But it may be applicable to something that the master plan committee wants to see if it's something on their goals list because it's something that's going to be required.
Anyway.
They're asking for pretty intense development by.
Yeah, they are. And I don't know the full gist of it yet. But like I said, when Sarah and I get finished adding a little bit and seeing what the DHCD guidelines will be, which buys us a little bit of time, then we can kind of brainstorm on it and see where it might impact on the master plan and how it impacts Shop See and all that.
Very. Anybody else? One of the last things you said, Mimi, was the downtown village district. And in our reading materials for tonight's meeting, those design guidelines, and I think, quite sure, the draft warrant article calls it the downtown district. They take the word village out of it. So to avoid confusion, one or the other should coordinate, you know, rename what you're doing, I guess.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the board even specifically voted or discussed that topic.
The name?
Is it the downtown district? Is that what the official name is now?
Yes.
If you, well, that's the proposed name. It's right now, it's it's one of the village business districts.
Right.
But the proposed, the proposed revision to 174-23, a couple more, are calling it the DD, downtown district.
Oh, okay.
You guys, Sarah or Karina might have that draft or an article, the revisions.
The, so the, the
It was in the Dropbox.
Is, is on the Dropbox. Yep, it's on the Dropbox. And it, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It was discussed at a board of selectmen's meeting and they did vote that they would go with downtown district if it were to pass so that when it's delineated as separate from the others, it won't have village in its name causing any confusion.
Okay. duly noted. I'll change that.
Although that is one thing that we may, who's sponsoring that warrant article?
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen are? Okay. Even though it's a zoning article?
Yes. I think the Board of Selectmen is one of the few entities that can go forward as only our.
They are. Don, if you recall, there are these DHCD guidelines on amendments to by zoning bylaws. And I can send that out again where it talks about handful of entities that can move forward a bylaw change and how they go about doing it. And I believe the zoning board of appeals, I mean, the Board of Selectmen is on that list along with planning board.
Yep.
So that would give them the authority to name the district, name the zone?
No, I don't know about authority. That would probably be a consensus on, you know, if somebody has a comment on it during the public hearings, it could probably go back for discussion, you know, for amendment
It's just that it's a constant need for the planning board to make sure that we don't cross over into other boards authorities and to be always watching for other boards crossing over into the planning board's jurisdictions. It's not the end of the world, but these things have a way of creeping. One minute you're changing names, the next minute you're changing other things. And before you know it, other boards are performing the work of those who really do have the jurisdiction. So we should take a look into that. I kind of like it, but we just want to make sure that those with authority are the ones that are doing it. Anything else on master plan?
That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Mimi. Next item on the agenda is continued public hearing. Right on time too, because we can capture both of these at 7:05 and 7:10. And I see it's now 7:11. 96 Mount Vickery Road definitive subdivision plan approval. This public hearing is continued from December 14th and January 11th. And also the public hearing, 96 Mount Vickery Road, lower impact development special permit. This one, this public hearing is also continued from December 14th and January 11th. The last town planner to give us the update and the action that the board needs to do tonight.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I'm recusing myself on this one.
As you did for the previous two times that the hearing was open.
I hear there won't be a lot of discussion, but I just want that for the record.
Okay, so noted. So at the planning board meeting on January 11th, as Don just pointed out, the definitive subdivision and low impact development special permit public hearings were continued to this evening. On January 15th, we received Fussin O'Neil comments on the applicant's second submission, which were plans dated January 5th, 2021. Those were distributed to the planning board. I mean, yeah, the Fussin O'Neil comments, review comments were distributed to the planning board and to the applicant so that they could address them. And we followed up with them in the interim. And on February 1st, we received an email from Bowler representing Bartolini Builders, the applicant, or Michael Bartolini, requesting that they could continue this evening's public hearings to February 22nd, the planning board's next scheduled meeting agenda. And that's it. So we would need a motion to continue those public hearings. Just want to point out that an extension request for the special permit for the lid at the next meeting, if it is to continue beyond that, will be, we'll have an extension request to extend the decision deadline time for the special permit for the lid. It's not needed this evening. This was a request strictly within that timeframe. And they also indicated that they wouldn't be attending this evening. It wouldn't be necessary if they were just continuing.
Exactly, with no discussion. So the definitive subdivision review period ends on March 20th. And the lower impact development special permit approval period ends on February 26th. And our next meeting is February 22nd, correct?
Correct.
So Mr. Stein need a motion to continue the public hearings? And that would be to 7:05 and 7:10?
So moved.
Motion's been made in second to continue the public hearings for the definitive subdivision and the lid special permit to 7:05 and 7:10 PM on February 22nd. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes. Julie Han, yes.
Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. EDC downtown district bylaw status, design guidelines. So earlier I mentioned the draft warrant article, but and that was only relative to the name of the district. The, this discussion item on our agenda states that it's the design guidelines. So we have to watch and make sure that we don't go beyond the design guidelines and start talking about the, the draft warrant article because it's not on the agenda. So did everybody get the, I was right, Karina, about this 14 pages, design guidelines?
Let me verify.
I think the rest of the board already did. I'm seeing that everyone's agreeing.
Yep, that's correct.
I guess this is a discussion item. So whoever wants to go first, would that be you, Sarah?
Um, yeah, I mean, just to set the stage a little bit, you know, these design guidelines were approved for distribution by the Board of Selectmen at their meeting on the second. They also at that same meeting decided that they were going to have a public forum at their meeting on the 16th to try to engage stakeholders and, you know, people in the district who may be impacted if this goes through. So they have since, you know, published a packet for that forum, you know, in conjunction or collaboration with EDC. So they're definitely, you know, trying to move things forward. You know, I reviewed the guidelines. I think that, you know, that's a pretty good start. They're pretty subjective, you know, so I think that maybe adding a few kind of concrete phrases that give some, some real definitive guidance, you know, maybe even some pictures would be really helpful to, to funding itself to just clarifying some of the document.
Anyone else?
So I just want to point out and to add to Sarah's discussion that the information packet on the forum is on the town website. So you can locate there and it's, you know, a nice graphic document that talks about the
Yeah, I agree with Sarah that it's a good start. It's always easier to edit something than to start from scratch. So it's definitely a good start. I think Maureika put those together. And I also agree with Sarah, it'd be helpful to have more concrete guidelines so it's not so subjective. And I looked at North Burrows, which are much easier to follow because they have pictures like what's encouraged, what's discouraged. When they talk about facade, you know, this is what we want, this isn't what we want, which makes it far easier to follow. And these are pretty long and they refer to like the whole greater downtown area and maybe other commercial places. I think we need to be very narrow and have it just be the down, the, what are we calling it? The downtown district? That, that's in the, the bylaw that's coming forward. And also just to mention that it is up to the planning board to put these together. That's under our jurisdiction.
Anyone else?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stein.
my question, and there is a member of, at least one member of the EDC in the, in the panel or waiting area who might be able to participate in this discussion. Because one of my concerns is the design guidelines are not referenced anywhere in the draft bylaw. And we've done other overlay districts, you know, for solar and marijuana since I've been on the planning board. And those overlay districts had rules and regulations, which, you know, I'm not sure if the other residential districts have rules and regs. But I'm not aware of how design guidelines are, do they take the place of rules and regulations? Or, and if, and if, either way, you know, why are they not referenced anywhere in the bylaw itself? And one thing I would also would want clarified is what does a developer go by? Do they go by the standards, the setbacks, the requirements of the bylaw? Or do they refer to the design guidelines? And is that the standard for what, that they follow? And on what basis is the planning board issuing special permit? Is it under the design guidelines or is it under the bylaw? So I know that's a lot in one question, but hopefully we can, you know, get some clarity during the public hearing process, if not this evening on this.
I'm glad, y'all said, Jesse, I'm glad you brought that up because when I went through them, I felt the same way. I was trying to see how they were connected. I did see a sentence in the guidelines that said if there was a conflict between the guidelines and the code, then the code governed. So that's usually the way it is. But
You saw that in the, in the bylaw, Don?
No, I saw it in the, in the design guidelines.
If there's a conflict.
Yeah, like if the design guideline said that the setback shall be eight feet, minimum eight feet, and the code setback said it shall be 10 feet, then which one do you go by? You go by the one in the code. Code governs. There's, if there's anything that conflicts, that conflicts with the design guidelines.
Well, wouldn't, shouldn't there just be no conflict? I don't understand why there would be a conflict. That's, seems like that creates a lot of confusion.
You're right, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a conflict, but and I guess as we move through this process, we'll try to eliminate all of those. But I suppose because they're guidelines and they're subjective, somebody could interpret a guideline in a way that would, that may conflict with the direction of the code. And in that case, the, the board would be governed by the code. I think it's a standard boilerplate sentence that is put into things like guidelines that if there is a conflict and which, which document has the final say?
Mr. Chairman?
Um, Mimi, Marnie had, you had your hand up first there? Mrs.?
Thank you. So the one question that I had, and maybe it's just a clarification, but my understanding was Jesse, you just made the comment of a special permit. I think the whole purpose of this is to eliminate the special permitting process. And this, this elaborates specific uses for, in the downtown district. So that, that, you know, by right of what we are able to do now would go away. That's my understanding. And I know Julie Conley's on, so maybe we could ask her to clarify that. And then let's, relative to the guidelines, I agree, I think it's subjective. I think it would be nice to have a little bit more clarity and definition around what is, you know, what is good, what is not. And then the other point is I know at the very end, it talks about new construction. We have all these businesses that are currently existing. And I think there's, you know, there's nothing that states a grandfather clause or requirement for, for businesses to upgrade to the design guidelines. And I think that would be a hardship on some of these, these district, these businesses. So those are just, that's just a comment. And then my last comment is there are some, there are some businesses that are actually named like Moro's Village Cafe in the, you know, based on where it's located as the downtown village district. So I do think we should be considering that as well because that's a, that's a business that has a name that has been operating that way. And all tax documents and everything is official that way. And do we want to impose again more hardships? My only comment.
Mrs. Latrell.
Um, in answer to Jesse's question, it does bring up the guidelines under the site plan review section that the planning board may adopt design guidelines and apply them to major site plan review. And so there are a lot of by right uses, but there, my understanding is everything needs to go through site plan. And, and then over certain thresholds, it requires a special permit for certain uses or sizes.
One of the things that I read that caught my eye, and I'm sure there's others in there that are difficult, would maybe difficult, I think, I hope I read it right, but it said that window air, window air conditioners cannot be visible from the sidewalk or the street. So if from the sidewalk in the street, you can see the front of the building and the two sides, that would mean the only window air conditioners you could have would be in the back. And not sure how that would work on a hot summer day if you're working in the front of the building where there's no, unless you have central air conditioning. There may be others like that. And another thing, when I was reading, they referred to rather carefully, I think, the interior of the buildings. And I think one of them, one example was to not put things in the window like the back of a bookcase or the back of a rack or something so that when you look, look into the building through the glass or the window, you just see the back of something. So, but anytime we start to get into what goes on inside the building, it's got to be done very, very carefully. And I think we've said this before that, and Marnie, you were saying, you know, hardship. This is essentially a, this, this revised downtown district would actually be imposing an additional tax on those who live there. Not just a monetary tax if they wanted to fix their house, but it would provide, it would also impose on those people another layer of government involvement in what these private property owners can do with their homes or their businesses or both. And, you know, none of us live in a district where if we want to change the color of our house or we want to, you know, take down the columns on our front porch and put something else there, we can just do it. Just get a building permit and do it. As opposed to what's being proposed and having people either from within the district or outside the district ruling over what you want to do to your, your property. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it can be viewed by those within the district as an additional burden on their properties that the rest of the town does not have. I see that Julie, Julie had her hand up.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. I just wanted to be available. I didn't have my hand up, but I put in the comments that I'm here. If you have questions, it sounds like there are some questions, so I'm happy to try to answer them as, as best as I can.
Julie, can you just clarify who you're representing?
Sure, I'm, I'm representing the economic development committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so a couple of things, I was trying to take notes, so I hope I got everything and feel free to interrupt me if I'm misleading or if I forgot something. So one, the, I think it was Jesse asked about the design guidelines versus the bylaw. So the design, the bylaw, that's the codified, you know, regulations, that's a codified law that, that, that everyone has to abide by specifically to the, to the downtown district if this should pass. So the design guidelines are, are referenced in the bylaw and it, and the bylaw permits the planning board to, to promulgate design guidelines. And the reason that we thought in consultation with, with the Board of Selectmen and with the, our, our zoning consultant and our legal zoning consultant. And after having reviewed how lots of other towns have done this, the, we, we made the, we made the suggestion that separating the design guidelines from the bylaw was, was a good idea. And that's how a lot of towns have approached it. Because we see the zoning bylaw is sort of the, the structure of what we're looking for. And that's where we put things like setback requirements and building height requirements, all, all sort of the nuts and bolts. But then as far as what does it actually look like? What restrictions, if any, do we want to put on, you know, on what sort of materials or plantings or anything like that is, is done? And that, that's how lots of towns do that. So, so the design guidelines that Maureika put together are intended as draft with a capital D and then some. These are very preliminary and they're, they're not something that we even are necessarily we even are necessarily saying, oh, this is how it should be. It was sort of set to serve just as a starting point to get the ball rolling, um, after looking at sort of how other similar towns have, have put these out. So we are absolutely, you know, you know, that, that I'm really glad that you guys are taking this up because, uh, you know, we, we certainly want discussion around this and we think it's a critical part of, of the whole package because I think when people in town, at town meeting, hopefully, um, if they're, this were to go forward to town meeting, if, if they're evaluating, what does this actually mean for downtown? Yes, obviously, building heights setbacks, all that kind of stuff is very important, but you know, to, to visualize what's it's going to look like. You know, the design guidelines are important. One major reason that we kept them separate also is the thought that, um, you know, design guidelines might, we, we want them to be a little bit more, um, amenable to being changed over time. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head when this, uh, current zoning bylaw wasn't acted, but it was a while ago and, and I think that's the intent, these, you know, and that's why it's very hard to change a zoning bylaw because you're not supposed to change it on a whim. It's supposed to be something that sort of sustains, um, the, the structure of the town or the area that it represents, um, for a long period of time. Whereas design guidelines, we don't know what materials or what, you know, especially thinking from an environmental perspective, what things might be changing in 10 or 20 years, um, that, you know, might, might, um, you know, justify a change in the design guidelines, which might be easier than a change because those are just put out by you as a planning board as opposed to having to go to town meeting and get two thirds of vote to change something in the zoning bylaw. So I think that's where the reason for the distinguishment. So I hope that was helpful. And feel free to interrupt if you have questions. If not, I'll go on to the next question that I thought I heard.
Yeah, Julie, um, so, and, and, um, Mimi, thanks for pointing this out. In part, Roman numeral five downtown district plan approval. The bylaw current, the draft currently reads in the downtown district, a major site plan, major site plan approval shall be by special permit from the planning board for any use requiring a special permit. In such cases, the procedural requirements and decision criteria of, list all the, uh, paragraphs shall apply. The planning board may adopt design guidelines and apply them to major site plan approval applications regardless of whether a special permit is required. So that's, I, the way I interpret this, if I'm sitting as a planning board member on a, um, on a site plan approval, I have the option of applying the design guidelines to this, to basically to the, the approval criteria on a site plan. Is there anywhere else in this bylaw where the design guidelines are referenced? And that's question number one. Question number two, to Marnie's point, this does not seem to supersede or eliminate the special permit because it actually specifically states regardless of whether a special permit is required. So if, maybe if you could also address Marnie's question regarding.
Sure. Yep. That was next on my list. Um, so first to just your question, this is the only place where, um, the term design guidelines appears in the draft bylaw. And it says the board may adopt design guidelines and apply them. Um, that, that is interesting point and I hadn't thought about it the way you're thinking about it, but I, I see how it could potentially read that way. So maybe it's something we want to clarify. Um, and again, I, I would think that if we're, if they are adopted, we'd want to apply them probably, you know, pretty universally. I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't apply them. But again, I guess that would be to the planning board's discretion, but I'm open to saying the, you know, may adopt and thereafter shall apply i- if that's what you want. So that is a interesting thing to, you know, to discuss and to consider a little bit more and make sure our, what we, that our intent is clear and that we, you know, come to agreement on what we intend because I'm, I, I didn't pick up on that reading of it before, but now that you say that, I, I see that. As far as the special permit process, we are not seeking to eliminate this, the special permit process. We just, um, added a list of, of kind of, of by right uses that wouldn't require a special permit. And that's a tool that a lot of towns use to, one, encourage certain uses so that, um, somebody coming in and, and wanting to, to start a business that, um, or, or, or build something that, you know, includes those uses, knows that they won't have to go through the special permit process for that use. And two, I think it's, you know, it, it, it serves a purpose of encouraging those types of businesses and also, you know, it's sort of a balance between protecting against things that are other than that and, um, allowing, encouraging those, um, things that we really do want to be able to, to go through easily. But yeah, we're not, we're not eliminating the special permit. We're just adding a list of things that don't require a special permit is the intent.
So Julie, can I ask you a question? Can you give like a brief scenario of someone who comes in? And just a quick bullet by bullet, you know, they have a property in this downtown district. Do they go to the building department first? Do they go to zoning first? Do they go to planning?
Well, I think, uh, and that's, um, I, I'm, that's certainly, I'm not an expert of that, so I would, you know, I'm not sure and it would depend on, on the situation, I guess, but I, I assume if it's a use issue, perhaps they'd be able to bypass a zoning use if it was one of the by right uses, I'd imagine. You know, so long as it fits within that. And then as far, you know, I, I'm not sure exactly what the order is if they have to go to, you know, building department. And I know we've talked before about, you know, i- if there was a project coming in that was a sort of significant project, you know, it might make sense to have some collaboration upfront with representatives, um, from the different boards and committees, including planning, um, zoning if, if required, um, you know, the, the building department, conservation, all those, you know, getting everyone together upfront to kind of roadmap it. If it was a significant enough project that the town wanted, you know, I think that's a, a great way to start. So I, I don't know the order, but I do suspect that, you know, if, if it was one of the enumerated by right uses, then maybe they could surpass the zoning part of it.
Right. I'm sorry. That was so open ended. I'm trying to hone in on is, you come in and you're in the downtown area and you need a special permit for lid and you need major site plan approval. And then you also need a special permit for downtown district. Or are you saying in part five of the byline, I'm, I don't want to, it's just a question. I'm no, we're not supposed to discuss the bylaw draft thoroughly here, but I, I just wanted clarification on, so the special permit for business village site plan review disappears? Or only a portion of it is?
Yeah, I think if it's a, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know the process and I don't know if you would have, you know, somebody would have to, uh, say, you know, I'm assuming that there's some sort of approval process where somebody says, yes, this business does fit into one of these categories. To, to, you know, in case it's, you know, something that is not abundantly clear, um, that, you know, there's some sort of stand for approval that says, yes, we can, you know, this is one of the allowed uses and it doesn't have to go through, um, a, a, a special permit approval.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to read through it more thoroughly myself and maybe Sarah has an answer to that, but, um, and, and she and I can discuss it more. It's just, I'm just trying to get a little bit feel for it. This isn't adding a special permit on top of all the others. This is in replacement.
Correct.
Permit that was previously, um, more defined, not more defined, but had more.
It was more subjective, I think. So I think we're trying to take.
More jurisdictional teeth.
Yeah.
That's kind of lazy.
Yeah, I think the, the reason for, another reason for having, you know, some of, some of this more specifically enumerated is, you know, i- if we're envisioning our town going forward and we're looking at, you know, the 2008 master plan along with the master plan that's currently being worked on by the master plan committee. And we're saying, how does, do we want this part of downtown to look, you know, in the future in 20 years and 40 years and 50 years? You know, what kind of uses match up with, with what we want here and then sort of preserving and codifying those. Um, so it's not, you know, i- is those special permits aren't, um, you know, i- it, so it, it just allows for more consistency and, you know, who knows who's going to be on the planning board in five years and 10 years, you know, so this just sort of preserves the vision, um, going forward.
Are these design guidelines part of the forum?
Um, not particularly, um, because they don't have to be, I mean, I, that, that's a good question because in some ways they go hand in hand, right? Because people want to know wh- what they're going to look like. But, but I don't believe they're part of the forum because they think the forum is focused on, but it, the, now that they're not part of it, but it's not, you know, they'll be discussed, but I don't think we're going to go through them in detail because we don't really have, like, this is the, a draft that's for discussion purposes only. I don't think it would be right to do it, you know, again, these are sort of the planning board's purview is what we assumed, assuming that the planning board wants this task. I mean, there are other communities that set up a, design guideline committee to make these things. There are many committees that have a design board review committee. That is the one that checks the boxes and makes sure that, you know, that projects are in compliance with, with the design guidelines. But, um, without having heard that, that's something that you guys don't want, I was assuming you, um, do want to keep that under the planning board purview and unless, you know, uh, unless I hear, I haven't heard anything otherwise, but we sort of assumed that. And I think that's appropriate if, if it's something that you guys want, recognizing it's also adding something else to your plate. So that's, that's the question I've asked a few times, um, just in general, not specifically to you, you know, are we sure that planning board wants to take on this kind of additional task?
Okay, thanks.
Andrew.
Hey, Don. Um, I had a question. Uh, I think I forgot who brought up the, the word process. So, and I know this is just a discussion item. So is there, is there a, when is it that we need to finalize all our comments and give them back? So it's no longer a discussion item? Is that after the forum, assuming that, you know, the, the property owners show up and give feedback on what they'd like to do? And if, you know, if no one shows up for that and we don't get any feedback from the property owners, then you know, then what? We just go with what we think? Um, I'm kind of, kind of wondering what the, uh, indeliverable is for us to, in timeframe for that? Does that make sense?
Are you asking me that? Or just?
I was asking Don from, from the planning board standpoint, or when our feedback is due.
I think one of the feedbacks we can give is tonight, and Julie was just talking about it. I think if our down, if this district was, you know, a couple of miles long of total roadway and storefronts and buildings, uh, it, it would be a, a big additional task, but the proposed downtown district is relatively small. And there's virtually been no projects, one project in the last, I don't know, 20 or 30 years that's come before the planning board. It's just not a, uh, for that district, it's not a, a, a whole lot of extra work, I don't think. So I had this discussion with Karina last week and, um, I think unless the board feels that it, um, it's in better hands, then I think that the board with the jurisdiction to try to implement those, the guidelines and whatever new, uh, district code is, results from this, that it would be the planning board that would be trusted to, um, implement it and, and grant the permits and the approvals. So, um, if, at least at this point in time, I would hope that the board would agree and Julie could take that back and say, okay, the results of this guideline direction and new code will be, uh, under the jurisdiction of the planning board. Get that, get that off the table. That, does anybody agree with that?
I do.
I do. I think you're right. And, um, uh, Judy Barrett, the zoning consultant, said that towns who had created those, uh, design review committees are disbanding them because it's just another layer. And we're trying to, by this, by having the by right uses, we're trying to streamline the process and if having another committee would, would, uh, not accomplish that goal. And I think we've been, the, the downtown or the village business districts now have some, um, design guidelines built into the bylaw that, you know, we've been handling, I think that we can do fine.
So the design guidelines, um, if I'm understanding this correctly, if there wasn't a, uh, design guideline committee, it would be one of the planning board's jurisdiction to change, adopt, et cetera, the design guidelines. So would a planning board have the authority to do that just as an agenda item on a planning board meeting? And without going to town meeting with the, the design guideline change?
Yes.
Or would? So the five of us could, could basically have the authority to, to make the design guidelines the way we saw fit.
I think we would hold a public hearing indicating that we plan to change and make revisions to the design guidelines. And then take public input rather than just having an agenda item and, well, let's change the, um, let's change the restriction on, um, roofing materials to include, um, papier-mache. So.
There's something about this that just strikes me is, I mean, I, I can't get, I can't seem to get past in my mind that we, you know, for, for, for other overlay districts, we have the bylaw and the rules and regulations. In order to change any, I think the rules and regs, I've never, I'm not even aware of how we would make any changes to rules and regulations, Mr. Chairman.
No, we would hold a public hearing, put it on the agenda, propose the change, either by adding something, subtracting something or revising something. Let the public comment on it. And then based on, uh, if, if the code gets changed, 174 dash something, that as I think Karina said, or Julie said, specifically refers to, in this case, design guidelines that we may adopt from time to time, design guidelines, then when the townspeople vote to approve that warrant article and make it part of the code, they're basically giving the planning board the authority to do that, to make those changes in the rules and regs or changes in the design guidelines. And I think, as I said earlier, the, uh, you know, the design guidelines are, I think, um, I initially was leaning toward what we've had for the last it should be 30 years with the special permit in the villages. And I was, um, I think outnumbered and, and advised that, that the way that these, that towns are doing it now or with these design guidelines. And it must be working in the other towns. Did I answer your question, Jesse? The answer, the, 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 the answer is that the board can change, can change the rules and regs. They can change the design guidelines as long as what's in the code gives us that authority. And that's what the people would be voting on. Do they trust the planning board to, um, to do it right? Or not? Who would they trust to do it? If they don't trust anybody to do it, then it won't get passed. But that means that, you know, if you want to change, if you want to change the, uh, the limits on the shutters on the side of the, of the windows, uh, you got to go to town meeting. People don't want to see that either.
I, I think those are all really good points and I, and I, I don't, I never wanted to suggest that I didn't think it should be with the planning board. We were just assuming it. And I just wanted to make sure you guys were assuming that and, and on board with that as well. Um, but one other thing before we get too far, um, off track is, um, Donna, you had asked some questions in your, um, um, Donnie, you had asked some questions in your, um, initial comments about how this could be burdensome potentially on the residential, um, portions, the rest, the, the residential properties downtown. And just to be clear, at, at least in, in the draft design guidelines, these are only intended to be, um, for commercial properties and not for residential properties. So, um, I, I don't think it would add any burden to, to residences downtown, whether existing or even if not existing, if they come before you in the future. And I also think as far as, you know, being really nitpicky about, you know, ACs and windows and, um, you know, bookshelves in front of windows and things like that. I mean, I, I assume and, you know, trying to think about how these will play out in my head, when, when a design comes to you, um, it's probably going to be at the beginning of a project, whether it's a new project or if it's a renovation of an existing, um, building or something like that. Um, so, uh, one, I'd, I'd have a hard time believing that, you know, under new construction, somebody would put in a, a, a window AC. Um, so again, these are all things that, that can be talked about, but I just don't think, you know, if, if, um, you know, I'm trying to think if, if Morrow has put in a window AC or something, um, I, I'm trying to figure out how that would even come before the board. I don't know if he would, I, 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 I haven't thought about or seen anything that would suggest you issue any kind of violation of an existing site or not. I don't know how that would work.
Well, that would be the building inspector, which the building inspectors do sometimes.
Oh, that makes sense. Yeah.
When they're driving around visually randomly see things and inspect and in some cases, uh, you know, it adversely impacts the owner of the property.
Yeah, but to.
Julie, where, where does it say in here that residential properties are exempt?
Um, it says in the, um, design guidelines. Let me see if I can find it quickly, but it says pretty clearly upfront that, um, this is intended to apply to commercial properties. Um, in the, in the very beginning, the first opening paragraph, the summarizing guide, guiding principles for the design and re- renovate renovation of commercial facade in the south and downtown. Um, so if we want to clarify that this doesn't, um, apply to residential, I'm okay with that. I don't think that was ever the intent. Um, and, and also, uh, I think Marnie raised the question about what about exist, would this apply to existing properties? Typically, these kind of regulations, you know, don't apply their, their, their perspective. And so it would only apply to things going forward. Um, and if we want to clarify that, you know, existing properties are exempt, if that's not in there, then you know, I, I think the same rules would apply as they do to any other building construction or, you know, my, in my 200 year old house with my old creaky stairs that aren't a code, you know, that's, it's there. So even if I renovate around it, it's there. So, um, I, I think I would imagine the same principle would apply.
Anyone else?
I think I just want to, maybe there's a parting comment. Hopefully, because I'm very, I, I still am somewhat confused. Um, and, and Andrew had asked the question about what the deliverable is. I mean, we, we, we're going to have public hearings and I understand that this warrant article is being sponsored by the, the Board of Selectmen at this point and not the planning board. I assume that someone wants us to approve this or is interested in having me vote to approve it. Um, maybe not, but if, if, if anybody is, um, and I, I, I would certainly love to understand this and, and know, you know, very, you know, clearly definitively what what is going to need a special permit, what isn't going to need a special permit? And the circumstances under which we would adopt the, uh, design guidelines. If, if, that would be a really good thing for me to understand, I think. Preferably in advance of the, the public hearings. Uh, but I understand those are coming up soon, are they not, Don?
Yeah, no. And I'm happy to even to, to have a, you know, to provide whatever I can to, to help you understand it. And just so, just over and clear, I, I I'm not sure if the Board of Selectmen is intending on sponsoring this by themselves. I think they, you know, I know they would like the support of planning if it goes to town meeting. Um, but the genesis of the bylaw itself is, um, you know, from the, the meeting that was held back at the end of November, right before Thanksgiving, where there was quorum for planning board, for EDC, for SHOFC and for, um, and for, uh, Board of Selectmen. And we went through all the, you know, again, not word by word of the document, but we went through sort of all of the points of, you know, uh, sort of each topic of should we include this and what should that limit be and what's an appropriate height and what's an appropriate floor area ratio and, and what's an appropriate, you know, step back. We kind of went through every piece and came to consensus where in each of those pieces, um, there was a clear majority, um, I believe in every instance and, and Marnie and, or, or Mimi or others who were there, Don, you can let me know if I'm misremembering, but my, my, um, you know, not that everybody agreed 100% with everything, but I don't even think any of the votes ended up being close. Maybe there were a couple of points that had one or two dissenters. So this document, that's the draft bylaw, is intended to be that consensus. And there were talks, there have been talks since then about should we change this or that? And we kept saying, no, let's stick with what we agreed on at this point to bring forward to the planning board hearing because that was sort of the consensus, the kumbaya document. Um, so Jesse, I'm happy if you have specific questions, if you want to walk through each phase of the bylaw, I'm, I'm happy to find some time to go over that with you, um, either, you know, before the, at some point before the, um, planning board, planning board hearing, um, I'd, I'd be happy to do that with you if, if you have questions or even just want to go through everything. So to make sure you understand it, because yes, uh, you know, I think if we go to town meeting, the best chance of getting this passed is if there's consensus between the, um, planning board and the Board of Selectmen. So I'm hoping that this bylaw will have their support and your support as well.
So Jesse, your questions are, um, right down the middle. Um, and brings back, uh, this type of actions that were performed when we did other, uh, bylaw changes. And, uh, you know, the biggest by far, the biggest kind of version of this was the ZAC, which was 110 pages of redoing the whole zoning code, which, um, was, uh, in public hearings. I think there were something like 65 or 85 meetings over four and a half years to do the ZAC. But more realistically for this, it's 14 pages. So if the board agrees that the planning board will have the jurisdiction over these design guidelines. And again, being respectful, not to, not to go over into others' business or jurisdictions, but if the, if the planning board is going to be the board that administers this and has the authority, then we better make sure that we understand it and we agree with it. So I, I think the next step would be to define, uh, who wants to bring this article that would include the design guidelines, who wants to bring it forward? And if the selectman said, well, we'll sponsor it, but we don't know that much about zoning or design guidelines, so would, would welcome someone else to do it or to help us with it. In which case, we would hope that they would say, the planning board. Now, in this case, because it's only 14 pages, and we've done this before, but never on Zoom. We've, we've set aside a, a planning board meeting or two or s- sections of a planning board meeting, an hour or two in, in length, where we would go through word by word, sentence by sentence, the proposed, um, action. And the, the five board members would, uh, recommend changes, say they're okay with it. And we'd just move our way through the, through the document and not just necessarily the wording, but the format. Like, for example, I think Mimi, you said, uh, North Pro has pictures. So that might be something that, uh, would be, would be added or other things might be deleted. But at the end of it, the planning board would, would, um, either on its own with the permission of whoever is bringing the article forward, the EDC, selectmen, whoever, planning board would essentially take ownership of the product and be responsible for the changes within. And then feel, uh, comfortable bringing it forward to the townspeople. Should never present something that you don't understand. Should never, uh, you know, do that and then not have a full understanding. We don't have to all agree on it. And then we would tell the people, well, three board members don't like this section two did. So it, it, uh, it, it, it is, it is what we're bringing forward with that lack of total agreement. We've done all of that before. So I would recommend the next step would be to, um, find out who wants to bring this forward. And if they want the planning board, now that we have a product, and I think a couple of years ago, we said someone else has to, has to prepare the product and we will carry it across the finish line. And that's what's happened. We've got this nice draft of, uh, design guidelines and a code revision. Hand it over to the planning board and we'll get it ready for town meeting. Through the public process of going through word by word, line by line, it's manageable with this document. And we can do it either um, all five of us uh, in equal parts or assign different chapters, sections to each member to be the, uh, the, the expert or the point person for those sections. Different ways to do it, but we've done it this way in the past. I think we did it this way with great help from, uh, the town planner at the time on the solar. Does that sound right, Andrew? You, you, uh, head, head manned the, uh, solar.
That was me, Don.
Oh, Jesse. Yeah, I mean, that's similar to the way it was done then.
No, I mean, that was a deep dive and by the end of it, I knew that thing inside and out.
That's what we need to do.
And that's what, that is what we need to do. Julie, I do appreciate your offer to, uh, take me through this. But I, I think Don's on to something, especially in that we really want to have that everybody on the same page and do it, in my opinion, in, in a public, uh, meeting format. Um, so I agree with Don, with Don's plan, um, going forward on this. Kind of dissect it amongst the five of us, um, in public.
But at this meeting tonight now, we should all, uh, express our opinion if that's the direction we want to go in. Or do we want to say, nah, don't, don't fix something that's not broken? Leave downtown alone. It's the village district. Forget this whole thing. That's the way the board feels. Or somewhere in between.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? When you say dissect, do you mean the proposed bylaw language and the design guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's doable.
So they could end up in a completely different document than what is right here in front of us or, or what we're talking about?
It, it could, but I think that, uh, it sounds like this, this board is respectful of and pretty much liking this first draft, uh, and the direction that it's going in. And so, uh, unless the public or the EDC or selectmen or others would send us in a different direction or unless we found a different, a better, different direction and we got buy-in from the other stakeholders, then, uh, we just work with what we have, bring it forward.
Okay.
Uh, Andrew, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I, I think back to what you just said about like, you know, what direction we go with it, you know, I'm hoping that this uh, session next week with the selectmen, we get a lot of participation from the people who own those properties that, um, you know, this really affects. And we get the feedback that you know, publicly that, yes, this is what we want to do. We're 100% behind this. Again, I've talked to Peter Spazey, who, you know, is part of that, that area and he, he's ambivalent about the whole thing and, um, said, and I know Julie, you said he had been contacted, but he told me no one contacted him about it. So I, I'm, I'm looking forward in here, you know, the people who own those properties and that are, you know, really impacted by this, their feelings on it before, um, we put a stake in the ground. If that's me. Thanks.
And to that, we have, um, I haven't, I didn't clear, I didn't confirm whether they've gone out yet, but, um, we've put together, you know, an information packet that invites all that's, you know, going in the mailbox of all the abutters to invite them to the forum next week to ask their questions. And, um, the EDC, you know, prior to this rendition of the, of the zoning board, uh, the, the zoning bylaw, um, we've had over the past few years, we've had multiple public forums when, and we've specifically, uh, reached out to the abutters to make sure that they're included because obviously this is their neighborhood and, and, um, you know, they're the, they're the biggest stakeholders here. So we want to, you know, we want to make sure obviously that this is what they want to. So, um, so I completely agree with you there.
Yep. Oh, Marnie, you, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I do feel that, you know, I contributed, I think Mimi did too. I think we contributed to line editing and providing red line edits on multiple, um, drafts of these. So I do feel like I, um, involve myself appropriately and I, but I do agree with you, Don, that we as a planning board need to own this and get it across the finish line. So we know how we can actually implement it. Um, if there is a property, I, I think there's only one property anyway, right now that would even affect. But um, if somebody comes forward with a plan, I'd like to understand how it's actually, um, executed against. So I'm all for the jurisdiction for the bylaw and the design guidelines. I need more time with those. I really just haven't had a lot of time to sectry.
Anyone else?
So I, I just want to clarify, just so I, um, just so I understand and can report back accurately, um, to the EDC. Um, so, uh, uh, definitely I, I understand that, you know, you, you guys as a board are going to take on the design guidelines and the current iteration of the bylaws should it pass, charges the planning board with the, um, with the right to put that forward. Um, and I, and I like how Donnie said it about, you know, that it'd probably be in a, you know, public hearing where they would adopt them um, and vote on them. Um, and, and that's how they would be amended or changed in the future as well. I think that makes sense to me. Um, but as far as you saying that you need more time to dive into the bylaw itself, it was my understanding that a public hearing was going to happen, um, the first one was going to happen at the end of this month to stay on timeline to be able to bring this forward to spring town meeting, which I know is now delayed. But, um, is, is that still the plan?
I think so.
Okay.
Our, our January 22nd meeting is jammed, it's full.
Yes.
And, um, the, the March 8th meeting is, is going to start to fill up quickly too. So, um, if we do, if we are able to, um, open the public hearing, get started on this, it would have to be, um, you know, a, a relatively, uh, appropriate time slot. Um, and not, and, and again, we've done this before where the board would, would hold a, a separate meeting, like not on a Monday night, like maybe Wednesday or Thursday night and say, all right, the only item on the agenda is to go through the design guidelines and we just sit down and do it. Try to do it on Zoom. I know we did it at many times on the, uh, at, at the town hall on the, on the table, but uh, just see how it would go.
So is it your position that you want to have the design guidelines ahead of town meeting to be included?
Oh, yeah. The, 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 the first person is going to say, he's going to read that section in the code revision. Design guidelines. They want to see what it is. Otherwise I wouldn't vote for it.
Yep.
There's just one more thing. Um, so if the, 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 the next step would be for somebody to tell the town planner that it's okay for the planning board to take this on. And I think that it would be between the EDC and the selectmen. If you guys agree on that, then send something to the town planner so that we can launch.
To, to, to take on the design guidelines? To, to, to take on the design guidelines?
To take on the whole thing.
So are, are you saying that you would bring it, the article forward to town meeting as opposed to board or selectmen?
We'd do it together. We wouldn't kick them out of it, but if, um, if they wanted us to do it, we'd, we'd take it on. Would rather, as you said, we're better off, you know, having, having it a, 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 a group effort so that the public can see that, um, it's not just, uh, one board in a vacuum trying to bring something forward, but, you know, you have a board of selectmen, you have the EDC, conservation, you have Board of Health, everybody, everybody likes it.
Um, so as long, yeah, I, I just, you know, town meeting happens once a year. I'm not, does anybody know when it's been rescheduled for this year? No, I don't know if they, if anyone heard anything.
So I'm reading Paul Samino's letter right now.
Okay.
It says, I am informed that the chairman of the, of the Board of Selectmen has set a target of April 20th for finalizing the warrant.
Okay.
But that doesn't actually say that the meeting isn't on the 20th. That's just for the finalizing of the warrant.
Yeah. So, okay, thank you. So, yeah, I, I think as long as, you know, we can, as, as long as it meets the timeline to be able to get it to, to town meeting, that's, you know.
And, and Donald, obviously correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, what we've done is had a placeholder for sure on the warrant. And then, I mean, even at the, during, at, at town meeting, like an hour beforehand, we still meet, and, and in a lot of cases, we voted at that meeting on support or otherwise with things. So we could actually, we'll actually just leave the, the public hearing open right up into the, into the day of town meeting.
That's right. Anything else? So we'll wait to hear from somebody who currently owns this product to give through the town planner, the planning board, the green light to, to take, take it and run with it. With the full understanding that if this goes well, the planning board will take full credit. And if this goes poorly, we will blame the EDC and the selectmen. Is that understood by, all, all, everyone's in agreement with that? All set, Julie?
Uh, uh, yep, absolutely. Anything else?
Go ahead, Marnie.
Yeah, just, I just want to be very clear. So what we're saying is we are proposing that we are willing, as the people who actually have to enforce zoning in this town, to get a full comprehension and understanding across the play, elected planning board officials of the bylaw and the guidelines, and that we feel comfortable enough and that we would be the co-sponsors or primary sponsors, depending on what the EDC and Board of Selectmen decide, and whatever communication comes across to Karina. Is that accurate?
It is to me. That's my understanding. That's what we want.
So I'll be waiting for a correspondence of some sort saying that the planning board will take this, has the, um, authority to take this on?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for my committee, but I suspect that won't be an issue. So.
Well, Tag, you're it, Julie. You, you're the one that's here with this meeting tonight, and, um, you gotta go to whoever you have to, to, to make, make that go to the town planner.
We have a meeting on Friday.
Excellent. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time and your questions. And if any other questions come up, I try to take notes and answer all the questions that came up in the first round, but if I missed anything, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, Donnie.
Next item on the agenda, other business properly before the board, planners' report, warrant article schedule. Karina.
Okay, just see if I can do this fast again here. Will you? One quick thing that we could probably just get feedback on right away is that, um, the treasurer has asked me, um, on behalf of the advisory committee, to find out if, and, and all departments were asked if there were any fees that we require for different things need to be adjusted since they haven't been revisited in a long time. So we have a South Pole Planning Board fee schedule that was effective September 21st, 2015. And it pretty much covers everything, but it's missing, um, an application fee for the scenic road, stone wall and tree removal process, which is a public hearing, um, and still to be determined if those will be consolidated or not as we finish out the, um, uh, the public shade tree, uh, policy docs with the group that was assigned to that. And then there's the special permit for adaptive reuse, adaptive reuse of historic buildings. So that one, um, we have other examples of special permit application fees. Um, that's easy enough. That will just mimic those other fees because a special permit is pretty similar. Uh, but the scenic road application for stone wall and tree removal, um, I was hoping the planning board would give me permission to work with Don, uh, Sarah and I to work with Don, um, directly to investigate and come up with a, a, a feasible fee for that application. And then report back to the planning board what we came up with. And my first link is that it was somewhere like $50 to $100, but I want to have something to back that up, why that would be.
And when does Brian need that?
By Friday. No, the night, uh, I think, hold on, by this Friday.
Oh, boy. So
By this coming Friday.
When Karina says, uh, asking for permission from the board for her to work with me, the, the real thing is that Sarah will do all the hard work, research. And the way we usually do it is we call around the other towns, uh, to make sure that our fees are, uh, comparable, not too high, um, and unreasonably high and, uh, you know, not, not too low to make sure that we're being fair and, uh, and line up pretty much with other sim, what other similar towns do. Marnie?
Yeah, just a quick clarifying question. Scenic road trees, do they fall in the residential ownership, or does it fall into the town's ownership, or is it dependent on the scenic tree and, and the property lines? My guess is that most of them are right on the roadway anyway. So are, are the residents really responsible for removing them? Or for the application for the fee is what you're talking about?
No, my understanding is that, um, all right, I got confused all of a sudden. Um, if you have a public shade tree, if, if you have a tree, if you have a scenic road, and let me start with the stone wall, and the stone wall is either straddling the property line, private and town right away, or on town right away, and the applicant or the property owner wants to cut a driveway in, they have to apply to the planning board, um, for a scenic road stone wall removal permit, which is a public hearing process. And right now, um, I saw notes here and there that there were charges and such, but I never found any evidence that there were. So for a tree, it's the same thing. If it's a public, if it's a tree, it's on town right away, and say it's in that spot where they want to cut their driveway, right? They have to have a scenic road tree removal permit. It's on the same application.
Got it.
Um, and so right now, you know, we charge them to put the public ad in, but we also have to do some administrative services to, to get that put in the paper and all the stuff that goes with it, uh, distributed, et cetera.
Perfect. Thanks for the clarification. Okay.
And Karina, you, you feel confident that you can meet Brian's deadline for Friday?
Yeah, I think what it is, is it's kind of like, this is what we anticipate we want to do, but then the board would, it would come back to planning board and be voted on to update our schedule of fees to add it to that.
And, and all the other fees at this time would remain the same because it's probably not appropriate to jack up the fees during the pandemic.
Right. Basically, it's adding would be eventually, we're going to come up with a, a, an amount that suits the scenic road applications, because the special permit for adaptive is going to be the same. So we're going to come up with what we think is the right thing, and then we're going to send that information back to advisory via the treasurer's request. And then we'll come back to the planning board at some point and officially get the new fee schedule accepted. And that may be more or less, but they just want an idea of where more revenue is possible, or if it's needed, or if we're overcharging and things like that. I don't think we're overcharging. I think that we were just missing that one application fee.
So the, the board's, uh, permission to move ahead with that? Everybody's saying yes. Okay. For, for, um, Kate's sake, uh, it's 8:22. I think we can finish up in the next eight minutes. Uh, approval meeting minutes, January 25th. Mr. Mills?
Can't hear you, Andy.
Oh, sorry. Make a, uh, motion. We approve the meeting minutes from January 25th, 2021, as written.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes?
Ullahan, yes.
Next item on the agenda is our next meeting is February 22nd. Subject, subject to change.
Don, before you go on, there's just one more thing, because I see that, um, I emailed you some information about, um, that Complete Streets project list.
Sorry about that. You're right. Yep.
That's okay. And I was just wanted to bring the planning board's attention to it. Um, if you could review that um, over the next few days or so, and provide us feedback that we will then, um, submit back to Sam Stivers, who's on the Public Works Planning Board, uh, and who is, um, has been talking to Karen Gallagher at the DPW, who's working with VHB for a list of projects that would be grant eligible, under a Complete Streets program. So if you see anything that's missing, or you want to add something, or something looks wrong, like that's not the right sidewalk over there, um, just email me or Sarah, and we'll compile it and then forward it to, um, Sam Stivers. And I, he's in the attendees list, so uh, hopefully he sees that we are, um, going to address that for him.
And Sam, I appreciate the letter that you sent, uh, addressed to me about your, um, uh, membership on the DPW planning board and, um, how you feel that, uh, it's important, this, and, and very timely for us to, uh, take a look at this. I had, uh, just two comments. Um, don't need an answer right now, but, uh, on the extreme left-hand column of the spreadsheet, there were numbers. And it, it doesn't, this, I don't know if, if it's a, if it's a priority number, um, what that number means. And then most glaring to me was, I only saw, uh, mention of, um, Boston Road sidewalk, uh, but I don't think it was the connection to Fayetteville. And I know for years, sidewalk to, across the, uh, causeway to Central Street has been something that, uh, been talked about a lot, but nothing's happened. I, I would think that that would be almost a number one priority for the town, would finally get a sidewalk between, um, the main, uh, part of town and, uh, Central Street and Fayetteville. Any, anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, Sam actually has his hand up.
Sam's got, okay.
Sam, you also?
Sorry, Sam.
Sorry.
You there, Sam?
Sam?
He's on his way to Fayetteville.
Sam, we can't see or hear you. Did you upgrade him to a panelist?
Uh, I just gave him, uh, permission to talk.
Don, I did want to say that on the Excel spreadsheet criteria, every category has a ranking between one and five, and they define exactly what the scale is that they're using. So you just have to go to the spreadsheet and look at criteria for what those numbers mean, and they correlate to every different category.
Well, that left-hand column had like numbers one through 48, something like that. They didn't seem to, no two projects seemed to have the same number. It's the far left-hand column. Maybe I wasn't reading it right, but.
Oh, their ID.
But what, what does it mean, you know? I don't need an answer tonight. I just, it would help to understand what those numbers.
They correlate to the sidewalk committee. So there's a sidewalk committee spreadsheet labeled one through 48, and then those numbers are in the CS ranking sheet. And then, so there are, that, that's kind of how they correlate. But I need to spend more time on it with him, like why there aren't any, um, why there's some that don't have them.
So how would you read the town's top priority? The number one?
No. Yeah, you know what? I actually don't see a, um,
So the 2015 sidewalk committee report with the 49 project rankings is the last tab, was the last spreadsheet. The state project ranking criteria was the first tab, and then the VHB ranking methodology was the second tab. And the VHB project re-ranking, including the sidewalk committee project, plus a few new projects identified by VHB. So I have to look at it more.
The V and ranking, it's that last column V, which is the priority on, under the CS ranking sheet. I think that's what, it would be great if Sam could chime in.
Okay, still not there, Sarah.
Right. So he's written in the chat that he's having a computer problem with sound. He said he'll follow up with an explanation via email.
Great, because I see it is now 8:29. A motion on the table. It's been seconded. Is that right, Jesse? You, you seconded?
Sure, yes.
Kate, anything?
I got nothing. I'm getting.
Nope.
Let's see, it's now 8:30. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Ullahan, yes.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thanks, guys.
You liked the Super Bowl yesterday.
Have a good evening.
Bye, doll.
Bye, guys.
Night, everyone.